It's 5 o'clock, town calls meeting to order. I want to welcome everybody out tonight. Start off with our prayer request list. Tonight we have Amanda Thompson, we need to remember her, her grandmother passed away. Elizabeth Kent, is retired teacher, she passed away. Need to remember her family. Lori Glover, her father-in-law has passed away. Melinda Huddleston, her husband's battling cancer. We also need to remember all those affected with the mass shooting in Florida. And all the children in this, our school system that are affected with flu and sickness and whatever else is going around. There any others we need to add to this list? If not, let's go to the Lord in prayer. To heaven, Father, we come to you just thanking you for this beautiful spring day that you've given us. Father, we see the seasons changing, we're truly blessed around here to be able to have a distinct four seasons and we just, we want to thank you for the beauty of each and thank you, Father, for the upcoming spring season that's upon us. Father, we've been touched this past week again with another tragedy in this country for those families in Florida. Father, we just want to be prayerful for them, pray that you'll comfort them. And Father, we know that we're no better than anyone else here, Father, but we do know that we love our children and we just pray, Father, that that tragedy never strikes this county, Father, and that our students will always be safe here and our faculty and our staff as well. Father, we want to remember all those on our prayer request list, many are sick or have lost loved ones or battling cancers or sicknesses, flus and other viruses. Father, we just want to pray that you'll be with them. Father, we just want to pray that you'll be with us each and every day and help us, Father, to be good people and be kind to those around us. Father, just thank you again for everything you give us. In Christ's name we pray. Amen. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We also have a couple here from our local leadership groups. If they would stand up, Adam Brinkley and Emma Overstreet. We want to thank you for coming out. Now you can give your speech if y'all want to go ahead. No speech? No, I'm just kidding, thank y'all.
I don't know.
Adam, you're from Gordon School Hospital. Emma, you're from Smith County.
Thank you. Now we will move to our first thing for the night and some awards and recognitions. We're always happy to do this, Ms. Gina Morris.
We have one award tonight and it's for a pioneer award and it's Miss Melinda's 5. We're going to bring it up. There's already been an article put out about this, so Smith County and I believe this on this one. But Melinda is our CTE Director and she has been recognized as the Tennessee CTE Pioneer Award recipient. She is the one and only winner of this award. And that is awesome. So this is Miss Tennessee, right? The Pioneer Award was established to recognize CTE Directors which have demonstrated extraordinary leadership in their hometown and at the state and national level. And she has done a lot for our county and this CTE department. One that comes to mind real quick is the Career Day. And I guess we're in our third or fourth, third annual, third annual Career Day. And she has been instrumental in doing that along with Mr. Anderson. This award is given to CTE Directors which have five or less experience in their role with the district, however, her entire career has been in CTE. She started as a, what I used to call home ed teacher. So she's been through the gamut of home ed, FACS, FCC LA and the works with that. On January the 13th of this year, Melinda received this award. It was at the Musicians Hall of Fame Building during a legislative breakfast and it was part of the Tennessee CTE Directors' Mentor Meeting. In the fall, she was nominated by her colleagues to represent the upcoming. She won that and then she went on to compete in like the middle Tennessee region and she won that. And then she went on to compete at the state level and she won that. So she is the Miss Tennessee CTE Pioneer Award winner. Couple things she has to look forward to. She's going to represent the state of Tennessee and a regional level in Kentucky and she's going to get to go to San Antonio, Texas and represent Tennessee as well. So congratulations. She's got a really, really nice plaque. It's not blue, I guess it's a plaque somehow that they give her. But around here, we like food, a whole lot. So when we go to Murfreesboro, we're going to get her a bun cake to share. Thank you, congratulations. This is a big, big, big deal. So congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on now to our consent items. Do we have a motion on our consent items?
Make a motion.
Campbell, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Moore, any discussion? If not, we'll vote, hold in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, we have our superintendent actions. Hope everyone had a chance to look at those. Now we will move on to new business A. Got quite a few policy amendments, so we'll try to go through these fairly quickly. New business A. This is Policy Amendment 5.106, Application and Formulate. This is the second and final reading for this policy. Do we have a motion on new business A?
Make a motion.
Mr. Manning, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Campbell, any discussion? If not, we'll vote, hold in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. New business B. This is Policy Amendment 4.206, Special Programs. This is the first of two readings for this policy. Do we have a motion on new business B?
Motion to approve new business B.
Ms. Moore, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Gattan-Bahn, any discussion? If not, we'll vote, hold in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. New business C is Policy Amendment 4.605. It's a graduation requirements. This is also the first of two readings for this policy. Do we have a motion on new business C?
Make a motion on new business C.
Mr. Manning, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Campbell, any discussion? If not, we'll vote, hold in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. New business D is Policy Amendment 4.606, Graduation Activities. This is also the first of two readings. Do we have a motion on new business D?
Make a motion on new business D.
Ms. Gattan-Bahn, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Manning, any discussion? If not, we'll vote, hold in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. New business E. This is New Middleton School Request to Purchase a Zip Line Playground Equipment from the Diabetes Grant.
I'll make a motion.
This is new business E. Mr. Campbell makes a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Moore, any discussion? If not, this will involve money, even though it's a grant, but we'll roll call. Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. New business F. This is Bid Approval for Two Type D 78 Passenger School Buses. Do we have a motion on new business F?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Manning, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Campbell. Mr. Manning, you know we're relying on you.
You can't go wrong.
Sounds good. This does involve money, so we'll roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. New business G. Bid Approval for Diesel Fuel. Do we have a motion on new business G?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Taylor, a second?
Second.
Ms. Gattan-Bahn, any discussion? If not, we'll roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. New business H. This is Bid Approval for Chrome Books. Do we have a motion on new business H?
Motion to approve new business H.
Ms. Moore, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Campbell, any discussion?
Does this about put us up to how many per classroom? Where are we at with this?
We're almost where we're at. We have to have just a few more, I think, to get ready for our own test. We're there. We're there, we think we're ready for a catch for our own, our own test. Danny, anything?
We're close. Gordonville's are close. This will, matter of fact, Gordonville doesn't even need this to go one-to-one, but some of the other categories do. And they won't, and some of them won't even put them to where they totally are for what we're trying to do to get them there.
Close to being on the road most. Gordonville, there's some private divisions and they were, they're there anyway, but we're trying to, you know, get some schools. So we think, we think by the end of the year, answer your question, it'll be over.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll roll call, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
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 New business I is Facility Locations. Do we have a motion on new business I?
I'd like to make a motion. Consider the Rose property.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Campbell, this is to consider the Rose property. Any discussion? Of course, this would be contingent on all testing needs to be done, you know, there's other things we have to look at.
I was asking, could you give the stipulations of the board members, want to make sure, you know, the time frame?
Right now?
And then some things that we talked about, you know, they don't have to accept, or they could say accept in negotiations, things that can make me frustrated possibly.
As the agreement stands now, that's not been signed, just the discussions. You have a one-year contingency period wherein the board must obtain site plans, approval, funding and authority to construct a secondary full campus high school to serve the area primarily served by the existing Gordonville High School. That would require approval, Smith County Commissioner or the governing body for the construction of the full campus. You don't have to have it constructed, of course, but the plans would have to be developed during that one-year period as it stands right now. But that's a term that's been discussed and possibly could be offered. Mr. Rosewood, or the person donating the property, would like to assist Smith County in developing a high-quality secondary educational program facility. Plans and specifications shall include all structures and amenities normally associated with the high school, including and not limited to, you have classroom buildings, cafeterias, libraries, assembly halls and full athletic facilities. Mr. Rose is particularly interested in a ruralized agricultural studies and a college and career technical education program and facilities. Primary structure would be a traditional design and architecture and the questions that should face highway to city. Mr. Rose would be allowed to review and participate in the development of the plans and specifications. And he should, aboard the form and committee, whether formal or informal, he'd like to be a part of that or his destiny. He may also designate a proxy to do that. Again, I understand that he's been explained and wouldn't expect, he has no approval or approves that he would like to be a part of the development or have someone to be a part of the development. And that, that's very much paraphrasing, but that's the way the contingency stands as of right.
And this would be negotiable, those, I mean, we could sit down with him and...
I would assume so, yes. Yes.
We did just pull up. We'll wait just a second and let Mr. Apple.
He just drove in.
He just drove in, so we'll let him come in and get in on this discussion. I think, I do believe, and I'm not, as everybody knows, I'm not a big committee person, but I do believe we need to develop a building committee. Everybody be thinking, next meeting we'll have a, we'll have new business and we'll just set aside hopefully volunteers, a voluntary thing that we don't want to have to sit in here and do rock, paper, scissors to say who's going to be on it. But hopefully everybody will, will think about it and if you want to be involved next week, we'll put together a committee and then when we decide who the committee is, we can pick a chairperson for that committee or a speaker anyway. We can hopefully, what I was thinking each month, maybe give an update if anything's changed, give an update to the board and we can figure out what's going on with it. We're discussing the, Mr. Manning has a motion to consider the Rose property. Mr. Campbell, second it, we've discussed. Mr. Winkler went through with the stipulations again for Mr. Rose. And we talked about maybe putting a committee next, next meeting, think about if you want to be on that committee. We need at least three, it can be more, but have at least three on it.
Let me also understand, the one year is just to have a plan, just some kind of formal plan and that's all it is? No blueprints? No, you can't...
There's no way you could have the blueprints and everything ready in a year?
He and I, like Senator Gordon, I can no matter speak for him, but I felt like, during his meetings too, you know, I felt like that, that he just want, he just, the main thing, he don't want to give it and it's such a, I feel like he would work, and I don't know, he might not work today, but I felt like he would work through.
I feel like any agreement will have a timeline and what that is, is probably, he's going to want to set a timeline for the contingency. I think he's been very clear on that.
So once you form the committee, it would be a matter of if this was the decision of what was going to be going forward, then the committee would put together kind of that timeline? That's...
Right. What we need, what needs to be done and how it needs to get, you know, we'll have to have, it sounds like we're going to have to have timelines on everything, so we'll have to move with it.
I have two questions and I don't know, Mr. Smith, if you want to answer this or some of the other board members. Questions that I have, and I, first, let me make just a general statement. For all purposes, and I don't know that the general public understands this, but the cost of the properties are fairly equal. It's even though, am I stating that correctly? I mean, not dollar for dollar, but pretty close because we're going to have to do quite a bit of work on the Rose property, but we're going to have to pay for the Preston property and, but the work that needs to be done on the Rose property has already been done on the Preston property. Am I stating that accurately? Okay. So with that being said, assuming the price is the same, one, how do we know we need a secondary school? And two, what, somebody explained to me, because in these meetings that we've been in, I've not yet been convinced one is better than the other. I'll just be real honest.
That is, that's the drawback, yeah, that's the drawback to the Rose property. I mean, we're being told kind of what's got to go there without doing, I guess, a formal study?
Well, we had discussed, that's the reason that I brought it up, we had discussed a couple of months ago and maybe even, we did that at the retreat, we may have discussed a little bit more about that. But we talked about, and I think we actually voted to, bring in somebody to survey our schools and determine how we could best utilize the facilities that we have. And I'm not saying at all, I mean, that we don't need schools because we need a building program in this county without a doubt. But I don't want us to waste money and be irresponsible and build something that we don't necessarily need. I'm not trying to poo-poo the idea at all and I don't, I don't mean to, I'm just trying to bring about some discussion because there's no discussion being had and this is a very serious thing and I feel like the public needs to know where we stand on it. And that we've done our due diligence in doing what we should do in making these decisions.
Well, in our last workshop meeting, we discussed about the Preston property. We had discussed the freeway and we had discussed the railroad track. And the thing is, is per some form of a diagram that we were looking at, it was under the assumption that there was a secondary road to get to that piece of property that you would be coming around the backside of it, crossing the railroad tracks that way versus coming underneath the freeway and then taking that right into where we would have it. Regardless if you're crossing over the railroad tracks once to twice a day, depending upon the number of buses and the congestion for that area, are we looking at if we only have one access and that area congested for the length of time that it would be to get buses across, they would have to stop, open up their door, look? I mean, where, where would be that infrastructure? Would, and would it be able to handle the amount of traffic that we would be putting there? And if not, then what would we be doing going forward with that property versus? I know you're on the table, you're discussing the Rose property, but if we fall back, we also have to look at pros and cons. I know you said, okay, they're equal in price, but infrastructure, is either one of them able to handle the traffic that it's going to get?
Sure.
Ms. Gattan-Bahn, we did research that issue from our workshop and even going back to a plat of 1910, believe it or not, there is what we believe the 40-foot roadway, it's grown up now, but there is a dedicated road by plat and the deep descriptions that lead from Fairfield to that property. So we think it's there. It would have to be well, but we think it's there.
I don't want to put you on the spot, but I guess I am, but did you tell me you talked to somebody that said they might?
We can get a runway through one next to railroad, according to Mr. Dagan Haynes. Mr. Dagan Haynes owns that piece of property. I approached him, sent him, and he said he would do whatever needed to be done to get runway to the first.
I don't think he did. He doesn't own that 40-foot. Or you wouldn't have to hack it, but he didn't. You wouldn't have to hack it.
Well, we're talking about the property, you're right, we're probably coming from this property, and like I said, I don't think we're fortunate enough to choose to choose from special and gorgeous. But I do agree with Tina a little bit on the railroad tracks concern and the interstate concern. Just, I just know with the people in my district, I've spoken to, of course, I hadn't spoken to everybody, but it's called me and emailed me and talked to me. The thing about the Rose property, at least you get out of, you get out of town a little bit, you get out of Main Street, you get on that end of town and you possibly got some more room down there. Now, I agree with you, I think, I think what else, I think all pieces of property, whether you buy it, it's probably the same as getting it to town and got to build it. They wash each other too, you know. But I think with this location, location would be better now. I can't sit right here and say we need a full-blown high school. We don't know. Could we? I don't know. I think eventually we're going to have to build something over there. Middle school or something, we're going to have a middle school somewhere. Grove, Mary Gibbs called us out to the meeting the other night, Grove's coming, Gibbs coming. And he said, you know what he's gonna say, he said, in 10 years, you better have something built up in there, otherwise you're going to be needing. But I'm just thinking, from that area over there, the Rose property is the better piece of property. As I said, I think it's unfortunate to have a choice in two properties.
It's not constrained. You've got, you've got access to get extra property later on if you need it. If you get this other one, you're constrained, you're landlocked. You're landlocked from the interstate and railroad track. And safety issue, I don't know if y'all even think about that or not, but by the interstate, you know, that's, if you get some kind of, if somebody wants to commit some kind of terrorist act, they can just come up on the interstate and do what they wanted to and they're gone. And not that anybody around here or nothing, but it might be just a, it might be a target for somebody else. But the main thing is, one's landlocked, one's not. And that may not be a consideration, you know, it's just something that'd be brought
The high school is definitely, I mean, if we, if we choose the Rose property, I mean, we've made that pretty clear, the high schools, it has to be a high school.
I think we're safe to represent, so far that has been a key stipulation.
That's one of my biggest concerns is I don't, I don't want to box us into a high school if that's not what we need. And I understand, maybe we could restructure some of our other schools to make that work, but I feel like we're committing to a marriage and not knowing who groom is. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I do. I mean, there's, there's other solutions to the problem, but people don't want to look at that. I mean, you could zone, take care of the whole situation problem, nobody wants to do that.
Well, we've looked at those numbers. Over.
Yeah, that ends up skewing it.
Yep. 41% of those don't even...
How long will it take to do the drilling, the pour drillings and stuff, like years, two years? How long does it take to do that? Within a year? Who knows?
No, it won't take that long to do that, but...
But both properties have that.
Yeah, that's, that's the thing, if, do we, are we left with any other option?
That's pretty much what you got right now as far as even, the reason the Rose property wasn't considered originally is because it has this 22,000 acre acreage. And we had so much info, we even started, you know, we, that was one of the original pieces that everybody would come and say, well, that, that it was the second cheapest piece of what it was that would work. But there was no sewer or there's no water, so you were starting at that cost, half million dollars before you ever started, didn't have any utilities, so...
On the Rose property, is there any form of, like a spring that we would have to be dealing with? Are we dealing with the water?
On which piece do you?
On the Rose property. I know the Preston property has that.
Both of them have.
Both of them have.
Basically has the same type, drainage. You just don't notice as much, you think about the Rose property setting higher, but it's basically got, you know, pretty close to the same.
We have, Mr. Winkler, about 20 so days on the option?
March 19th.
March 19th, okay. So would it be possible to talk to Mr. Rose and find out if he would be okay with a school, not just a high school, before that option runs out?
I would think so.
See, March 19th, would our next meeting be? It's after that.
It's coming, I guess, March 19th, 22nd.
He's going to a high school, he's going to want anything else.
Do what?
I don't think he'll want anything else.
He's concerned by the technical training area. That's his big thing, is the technical training area.
There's emotional side of it.
Yeah.
And I'm not going to tell them.
Mr. Winkler, one last question. With the technical, the technical type facility now, is that classroom in the school, is that a designated wing as a part of the school? Is that what, what, in what capacity is the technical training?
We did not get the impression that it involved a separate building or wing, it just, that is... just, that is something that's very important to him. Um, you obviously have very robust programs in those areas now, and I think he wants to ensure that that is still a, a key part of it. I mean, you obviously have vocational shop facilities that would be a part of it, ag facilities, that you would have anyway. But I think that was just something he, that he wanted to do. I've not got the impression.
Yeah, I didn't feel like he was asking.
I don't think he wants a separate building.
Gotcha, okay.
I think that's something, again, would be great to ask Mr. Rose to sit down with us, if, if you choose to do that, and ongoing, I think you'd see, I don't, I didn't get the impression at all that he was wanting something past what we would have asked, what we would have built anyway.
It may be that we could sit down with him. If we have somebody come in and do a study and say, hey, this is not what Smith County needs, they need this, I don't know, I mean, I, I don't know Mr. Rose personally, so I don't know.
Well, then, the other thing, my other question would be, because we're, as, as other facilities or as other activities, is it through what he had said, is it, is it the mandatory that we would have to have the baseball or the softball field, the basketball court specific, the, you know, the different things? What, to what length did he go into detail about the facilities needed for the athletic department? What was the?
I don't know that there was a great deal of detail in his experiences that it'd be a full campus, that he didn't want facilities here and here, he wanted the full campus.
I think his biggest thing, again, wasn't necessarily to say we're gonna pay for all that, I think his biggest thing was that they had that, he didn't want you to go out there and lock a piece of property. And again, Jamie, if you're missing her, he didn't want us to go out there and build a softball field, that's all we ever done with it. Or he didn't want you to go out there and just build enough to say you build on it, build an ag shop, and then there's Barrett Sutton. That's just the feel I got, and I may be, he, he wanted that, that wording so that it was protected that you actually built a campus there. And he didn't wanna just build a equity line as mechanical education, he wanted it, something done with it, and I don't blame you, if I was gonna give it, I would've taken it.
Yeah, I don't blame you for that.
Yeah, I didn't get in any manner, the things he said, I felt like he did, he did for the protection of the board and the county, so that he was doing something good, and that was the, I don't know Mr. Rose until I started meeting him, that's the first time I'd ever met him, and, but that was the impression I got, he just wanted to make sure it was used and maximized. And his words, exact words, he wanted to be a showplace where people came to the campus, they said, hey, that's nice, you know?
But full campus were his words.
We do have a motion on the table to enter a contingency contract on the Rose property, which I assume that means that we could speak with Mr. Rose or anything we wanted to change.
Yes, again, I ask you this order on the phone, if they chose to do this, they still could be ongoing negotiations as far as what we worked out to put on that, correct? That's, we're not locked in to do it. If you, if you voted again to do this tonight, you wouldn't be saying you got to do everything, you just, oh, you accept it, and then we sit down with him and see what we can work out. We might decide then we didn't want to do, that's something.
The board has not given you authority to sign any contract, but if they're not seeking a contract, sign it.
Right. Well, the, the other problem that we have would be if we voted on that as it stands, and that, as Tommy's motion stands alone, is if we voted to enter a contingency contract on the Rose property, and then we weren't able to come to terms, then...
Still have to approve the contract.
I understand that, but then the Preston property's gone, what are we gonna do then? Because the two, do you understand what I'm saying?
If March might take the option, Mr. Winkler.
Right. I just want, I'm just bringing that to y'all's attention, that, you know, there's still negotiations to be had, and I hate for us to, I'm not trying...
Letting go of both.
Right, yeah, exactly.
Well, that gives you something to think about. Most of the vote, if we vote not to do this, and then we're going to the next option, and we're gonna have to do it to do it or not do that meeting. Then I would not back it. That's options on the table, or it could be an option, and I don't know if this option could be on the table, if you vote to do this, and you vote to extend the option on the Preston property for sixty more days, and have a meeting to see.
I don't think we need sixty more days.
You're spending, you're throwing good money after buying.
Consider an option for another sixty days.
But, but, you know, I, I, I'm kinda like Robin here, you know, a full campus high school, I mean, do we need it? Do we not need it?
We don't know.
We don't know, we don't know.
We need to get his definition, specifically of a full campus high school.
Same, like, that's what he wants, and that's what he's put out there, and that's what's thrown out here, so...
Well, I have to agree with, with Mr. Apple over here, where he said it would be better if we got a definition of what a full...
Of his definition.
What his definition, you know, there's so many translations of what somebody thinks, and I would hate to be misunderstood through all of this, I mean, this is, this is a lot that's riding on the table at this point.
Some people, glasses half-full, some people, glasses half-empty, you know?
And we're talking, if you're talking about wanting to do a full study to see what we need, sixty days won't be long enough.
No.
No. I'm not, that's not what I'm suggesting, that, that we need a full stu, I, I mean, we've already voted to do that, number one, not on that piece, piece of property, but we've voted to have a surveys of all the schools. But what I'm gonna do is make sure we don't lose out on both pieces of property because of the way we're, we vote. Do y'all underst, do you understand that?
That's why, I don't, I don't say you can, this, in my opinion, I don't say you can, especially since we're not the end of the end of a basic contract, how that we can't accept that free piece of property at this, to this, at this point, and that, Mr. Manning's motion, and that locks you in, you've got it, you don't have to take it, but you've got that locked. Till we meet with you, at least that buys us some time on that one, and we don't offend anybody, and it gets going. And then, then you can talk about the Preston piece, those separate pieces, but that's my suggestion. You know, lock yourself in on this one to this point, and you're not locked in to have to take it, it's a decision, it's not needed.
Right. We have four different options on the table, we can lock into more than one option.
Yeah, is that, right, sure, sure.
What you're saying, then we got one choice there, and then we can move on to what the second thing I think you're asking.
Right, right. So, we have a motion on the table to enter into a contingency contract on the Rose property, which does not tie us contractually, just to be able to, to look at it. Uh, let's roll call this, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Moore?
Yes.
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 Yes. So, we have exercised option two. Do we have a motion on options one, three, or four?
Once again, I think we, we might need to make a motion on option number one, the Preston property. And for the sake of discussion, we make a motion.
Okay. We have a motion for sake of discussion, option one, we have a second.
Second.
Ms. Moore, okay, it's open for discussion. All of them, all of them say the same.
Aye.
No, it's open for discussion.
Discussion here, if, if we need to meet with Mr. Rose, and they're willing to extend a sixty, thirty-sixty days, whatever, whatever he says, I don't know, sixty days, I think, now, sixty days is March nineteenth. March nineteenth, I think we ought to enter into that. And then we need to meet with Mr. Rose, we're now in the next board meeting, to make sure we know what his definition, just for clarification, so that I think he's understanding, and what's the purpose? Why? So that we can, what are we trying to do if we get a sixty-day, or whatever, to learn more, do a study? What, what's the purpose of this? Are you just more trying to meet Mr. Rose?
Well, if we enter into, we voted to agree to enter into this contingency contract on the Rose property, that's where we are right now. But we have no idea whether that contract is gonna come to fruition or not, and if we don't do something on the Preston property, then we're, we're gonna be losing it, and then we're not gonna get the Rose property, the Preston property's gonna be sold, and we're gonna be left without any property. And that's not the position we want to be in.
That's what I want to paper, is that the reason, no, we didn't receive it.
What's it gonna cost us?
Then we're still having to be both options.
Both options should be on the table, we can nail down exactly what he's wanting.
Is that a legitimate timeframe?
That's a good question.
Pardon me?
That's a good question.
Is that a legitimate timeframe with everyone's obvious, the gentleman is hard to get a hold of, but are we going to be able to get the information that we need in that timeframe? If we're talking sixty days and we're talking more money, are we going to? Because if we choose not to take the Preston property, that money that we've now put down is gone.
Correct.
And my question too, and I know, I mean, dealing with Mr. Rose, he's very hard to get all that, but would it be realistic if we could, we got probably days, twenty-seven days, or something, there'd be a possibility, maybe we could get a hold of him in that length of time, and answer those questions, and maybe not have to take two, that might be...
Well, why don't we schedule a special call business meeting to address that?
If we could get him to show, it'd be awesome, that would be, and he could answer it.
And that way, we would know.
I tried to ask last time. I asked last time if he could come to a meeting where we get to hash all this out.
Do you know him personally?
I know him, yeah.
I, I, I mean, he's obviously doing it for the right reasons, so I feel like he'd come if we just get it, not be on his schedule.
Do we wanna look at March the sixth?
What, you wanna see?
I guess, yeah.
See if, will y'all get a hold of him, and then, and then we can, like...
Yeah, because we'll probably have to have tags. How we get the word, I guess we can just, we should have to put a week's notice before we have a special call, and then they...
If we had this meeting, and we don't come to a conclusion, can we take any kind of action to go ahead and sign the option on the Preston property by March?
At the special call meeting?
No, anyhow. I know you can't make a decision from too much money.
I think it's gotta be voted on.
Look, the meeting's active right now.
Yes, sir. Unless you got a special call meeting before.
And that might be something that we need to do.
What day is the nineteenth, don't you?
A Monday.
On a Monday.
I made on Tuesday, the next Tuesday.
And I'll be out of the country that week.
We're gonna put that...
Well, I'm leaving the...
You're saying the meeting is on the twentieth, our, our regular meeting is on the twentieth? So, you're just a day ahead?
Why can't we make this meeting with Mr. Rose, uh, on board?
Special call?
Special call board meeting.
Okay, if you get the date, set the notice, and we can know whether or not we need to take action.
Then we can take action.
If you have a work session before the meeting, have a meeting.
We could do that. Uh, you can nail down a date.
Media, preferably March the sixth, but now he's a busy, I know he's a busy man.
I wanna hear what he has to say.
We could do, like I said, do a work session at five, and then have the special call that...
You wouldn't wanna do any committee prior.
At six, yeah.
Because then you're having three people that are working.
That way, we don't have to, if, if we find out exactly what he wants, and we don't need the option, we don't have to pay for another option. I'd keep options open.
If he couldn't come, I mean, you would be scaping.
Yep, if he couldn't come to it. Scaping, sorry, telemark, or Dave Dylan, or...
Scaping.
Thank you, can't for your work session.
We just got a few questions we'd like to ask him, to see how firm he is on some of this stuff.
Well, actually, not, more or less, just to get his, get his opinion or his translation of a full campus. I mean, I, that would be, and timeframe.
And I know, I feel much more comfortable if you heard it from him versus me.
Relating.
Relating, just like you said, my perception could be different, but I try to be as open about it, but I really wish you, if you come and you could question him, I think you'd... We, we do not need to let more of these pieces of property slip through our fingers. I agree with Ms. Moore a hundred percent, one way or the other, you don't, you don't get this option that this property comes up like it's a fact.
Well, we're very fortunate that we do have an option.
Yeah. I think that do this is not...
Tentatively, March the sixth, if you can...
Work session at five.
Work session at five.
Special call board meeting at six.
Special call at six.
We have to put that forward in motion, if we can check it.
Check it. I don't think we can say yet, but we don't know.
We don't know for sure yet, that is the tendency.
Chairman, call me.
Okay. Any more discussion on that? If not, I believe we have a, an idea of what we're gonna do here. Everybody have all your questions ready, whenever we get them, I mean, anything you think we need to ask, any concern, anything you think of between now and then, we probably need to get this, get it rolling. Okay, let's move on to discussion A. This is, uh, the extension of the director's schools contract.
Yes, sir. Chairman, that, traditionally, the board has considered, since this time of year, the last year was in March, in anticipation that, and particularly this year, you will enter, I guess, the best way to put it is kind of a dead period of the election coming, you can't take action forty-five days before an election or thirty days after it, for the school board. Mr. Smith would now be in his second year of his current contract, but in reality, you only have a year left, because then that last year would be a search year, which is always traditional to him, and so, March is traditional, when you look at it, you can be, you can consider one or two of your extensions on him. Chairman asks that we look at it as far as the timeframes, and also, if you're gonna consider that extension in March, we have to give a little different notice, and it has to be particularly published, that that's what's gonna be considered, has to be the first item on your agenda when you include it on there. So, if that's the, Mr. Chairman, that's what the board wanted to know, we, we've looked at that, in tradition, March is, been when you looked at it in the past, so that would be necessary if you wanted to do that as an agenda item, if you're instructed to do it, or work with Miss Gina, if the notice is correct. I mean, you have to do anything if you're deciding to not, but it will be on the agenda item next month, published appropriately, so you could. And there has been, the state has, has made some regulations related to contracts, and they're made it, would likely have to be a slight adjustment, any to it anyway, so it may be a good time to consider that as well.
Okay. Is everybody good with that next board meeting?
Needs to be on the agenda.
Okay. Put that on the next board meeting agenda, first, first item. Mr. Smith, you good with that? Is there any discussion? Any more discussion? Thanks, Ms. Moore. Of our annual policy review for January, anybody have any questions on those? If not, uh, we do need to enter into executive session, we have a motion to enter into executive session. Mr. Manning, we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Gatton, bind, hold the papers, say aye?
Aye.
We need to clear the room out for just, just a minute, we'll bring everybody back in.
I'll make a motion to go back into the session.
Mr. Manning, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Apple, trying to write. All of the papers say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Back in session. We want to end tonight with, uh, Mr. Smith, wanna make a statement?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure the board has got a lot of calls, emails, uh, the tragedy in the past school shooting, we always get, I guess, talked to and asked questions for whatever reason, uh, this time, it really triggered it, I guess, hit home, tell a lot of people. I've got more emails and phone calls than I've ever got concerning school safety. Part of it, and I think we're blind if we say that, we don't know, I mean, you never know, a school, a school was one of the most, and not to make people feel worse, I hope we end up feeling better, but a school was one of the most... better, but a school was one of the most unsecure, just from the way it's designed, buildings. That they're... David, I know you're insecure, and you understand it, but we have a great plan for what we can have, Mr. McKinney. We do, I talked to the sheriff last week. I think there's going to be a big push, and I think that's where that I've tried to change with time. I didn't like SROs. I told Robin and Scott, thank the world, Scott, but I never liked the SROs, five-year ago, ten-year ago, but times have changed, and you don't get credit for what you stopped. You never know what you stopped. And there's going to be a big push. I'm going to ask, don't know if we'll get it, but we need an SRO probably in every school. We like three having that done. And the sad thing is, where we need them the worst, is where we don't have them all the time, is where we don't have good cell service, is where we don't... We need SROs. We have done to make people feel that we've got a fantastic security system, which doesn't stop a bullet, but it is a deterrent. We... Mr. Lewis, I think, was finishing it when I came in. We built foyer, spent several hundred thousand dollars on the foyer. It really, again, if you're going to come in, you're going to shoot them out, you're going to go, but it's going to slow down in bad time, and being honest. And maybe, who knows? If we got an SRO on site, that we could neutralize that situation. We have added personnel. At one time, even up to this year, we didn't have people in the front desk. They had to buzz people in from the cafeteria. Hopefully, now we've got somebody monitoring the camera and to recognize Joe Taylor when he comes to Union Heights before they let him in. And so we have a lot of safety precautions in place. We have a lot, from a security standpoint, we can't tell the public about, because if we did, we'd tell your game plan, so to speak. But we've also got a great safety and a crisis plan. We're reviewing them. I don't... I think Davidson County took off Monday and just met with their staff. That's what they did. They met their staff, went over their crisis plan. Ms. Kim Mann was going around to each school individually. I'm talking to each school individually. But we do have a great plan in place for what... To tell you we can stop it, we don't know. Hopefully, we don't have to make that, but we want to send a message. I think we're as prepared as we can be, and anybody around us is. And I want parents to know that, grandparents, and I've got two children in school, and I worry about it on a daily basis, too. But we do have a lot of things protocol-wise that we can't talk to the public about, but we put a lot of time... Gina, you know this is big to us. We can't put enough time in it, but I do want you to know, we are looking at some other stuff. I'm supposed to meet with all the sheriffs this week and the sheriff, and look at some things, maybe to speed up times and that kind of thing, and to look at what we need. You know, we've been talking about, really, in our high schools, that we probably need two SROs now, but we've got to get one everywhere first. And we are working on it. We're going to try to look into grants. I don't know if there's anything out there, but in these rural communities, where the the highest representative has done some things, safety-wise, at some of the smaller schools, maybe they look at extending that to help us. But it is number one on the list, we want the public to know that. We want you to know that if you get phone calls.
What I want the public to know is that the SROs that we have are funded a hundred percent by this, the school board, and that we're... That's coming out of our budget. It's not coming out of the county budget.